I called Councilman Nathan, probably June night. We got June 6th on our paper, we probably June night. Order is there. Tell you June night, right?
Right.
As always, we have an indication and we'll have our place of allegiance. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We'll all stand for our indication.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we are truly thankful for all our blessings. We thank you for the opportunity that you give us this day to be among the living and to be a part of county council and be able to do something for the citizens of this county. We ask that you be in our presence. We ask you for guidance. We ask you for forgiveness of our sins and that when we leave this place, that you'll take us safely to our next destination. All of this we ask in thy son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we don't have approval of our agenda tonight. And Mr. Seger says we don't think we have an extension session tonight. But do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
It's a little less than second of approval of the decision.
Motion in second. Does anybody else? We kind of, we want to add a, just a budget summary, a short budget summary to the meeting tonight. I guess we can put that in point three and four. Would that be all right? Just everybody's got a budget summary in their package tonight. And we just, unless it here tonight, she can kind of go over it right quick. Promise the meeting won't be as long as what I was asking. But all in favor of our agenda tonight, raise your right hand. That's six, six zero. None voted. Next thing, approval of our minutes from our May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen meeting. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Chairman, I approve of minute table eight, twenty-six. Meeting, will any member have a second?
Do we have a second?
Is that Mr. Chairman?
Motion in second. No one had anything to add to our minutes, so we'll ask for a show of our right hand and approve. First thing on our discussion item tonight is, uh, variance setback request consideration for a majority riding area of great court community. I discussed this matter with the staff and with representative Lawrence County Planning Commission. Planning Commission reviewed this request for variance, county staff and with the property office. Planning Commission voted, announced next to grant the variance. I believe the action of the Planning Commission is final in this matter and I do not believe any further action is necessary. But I would welcome any comments of Councilman, Mr. Thompson.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Mr. Knight.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Phil.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
So that's all we've done. We, I guess you can build your room tonight. Next thing is a resolution fifteen sixteen, resolution finding for a fee and legal tax agreement with Lawrence County and CBI. That's cargo bridge and iron, which brought out, I understand, BF Shop, Mr. James.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. That and ordinance seven ninety-one, which is the next item on your agenda, kind of go together. Very briefly, the new company CBI will be investing at least four point four billion dollars and they will be adding about fifty-six new jobs at the plant. If you will notice on, if I could kind of draw your attention to page two of ordinance, I don't mean to jump ahead. The, I think it's page two. Second paragraph at the top, you'll notice there's additional special resource revenue credit.
What page, Jim?
Page two of the ordinance. The company did a fee and lieu in nineteen, in two thousand eight for Lawrence County, which was approved by its council. For some number of years, the company did not take advantage of the financial benefits that were provided under the fee and lieu in two thousand eight. They realized that within the last year or so, as negotiations for this expansion and purchase kind of took place, they asked to amend their returns for the last three years, which would have resulted in a refund of between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollars to the company, which the county would have paid at one time. Negotiations with their legal counsel, the cost, it would be kind of a pretty good sized check to have to write at one time. We felt it was best, they were entitled to that benefit, but we didn't want them to pay it all at one time. So we gave them an offset on the credit, just forty-five percent for years, which equals roughly what they would have owed, and we would have owed them back the present. So that would offset it for four years. After that, it drops back to thirty percent, which is within the guidelines of the developer corporation that's set by the county council. In summary, the company is expanding and we feel like they're conservative with four million in investment. It will be certain more than that. The jobs are probably pretty much on par with the fifty-six jobs. We would encourage approval of the inducement agreement and of course, going into ordinance seven ninety-one, we would recommend first reading approval of ordinance seven ninety-one. I'd be happy to answer any questions on council. I have Mr. Lawson here to clarify any things that I may have misstated.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll ask for motion for our resolution fifteen sixteen, finding for a fee and legal tax agreement between Lawrence County and CBI. I have to say that we got a new employee of CBI sitting at our table tonight.
I might request, Mr. Chairman, to approve ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. Does anybody have any discussion? Not, we're voted by the show of our right hand. All approved, all. Okay, that's five one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to get your statement because of my authority.
Five four and one, abstention. Next thing is first reading approval of ordinance seven ninety-one, dealing with same company, ordinance authorized execution delivery of food rate, buying between Lawrence County and CBI. Do we have a motion? First reading approval.
I'd like to motion to approve order number seven ninety-one, first reading.
Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
I have a question concerning the company BF Shop and they did take advantage of something that was offered to them that we have to reciprocate to the company when just done.
The agreement is still in place. When they purchased the company, they bought BF Shop, they bought the agreement too. So the agreement stays in place and if we didn't honor the two thousand eight agreement, then we would be in violation. So it's a carryover. We see that, saw that CCL label in Plymouth, took over Avery Dennis. They bought not only the assets of the plant, but they also get the advantage of buying the fee and the root office. I understand, will you cut?
Any other question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kirkshane, how will the fee and lieu, the tax be split for this one?
This is in a standard division, which is in the same percentage as the school district and county proportionally, being roughly sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty-five percent to school district fifty-five, thirty-five percent, and those are rough numbers to Lawrence County. This is a one percent with Cleveland County as a part of the county. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other question? Okay, we're gonna vote on this by show of our right hand, first reading ordinance seven ninety-one. All in favor? Right hand. All opposed, abstention?
Abstention, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. President. Lisa, will you come follow around and just kind of review the budget right quick? Well, I'm not asking you to do it quick. We got rid of the ball, we delayed the meeting.
Included in your package this week was a contract summary that includes all the changes made since the last budget work session. All the funding that we're proposing in order to balance the budget includes the six mills of reserve, which is one million forty thousand dollars, four mills of capital at six hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, the local option sales tax, eight hundred and twenty thousand, and we would have to take from reserves five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, and that includes all four funds. Of the four, of the five twenty-three, seven twenty-three, four hundred and sixty thousand of it roughly comes from the general fund and it is for, it includes the LCDC reimbursement of thirty thousand dollars that's been added back. We received a letter from the association accountings, which stated that our insurance premiums for property liability and tort insurance would be reduced by forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's less than what we had originally budgeted, so that's been added back. The fifteen thousand that came out of general fund for museum funding, that'll be funded through another source, and we added back the ten thousand dollars for the Lawrence County disability and special needs board. It includes ten thousand one hundred and eighty dollars needed for reserves to balance victims and citizens and fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine for enterprise. Those three funds actually together come to the five twenty-three. And this budget does not include any of the salary adjustments that we discussed.
Does anybody have any questions? Is Lisa?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kirk, does that premium due to the association accountings include the new building when it comes online? No, it does not. Right now, there's just a builder's risk premium that we're paying. It does not, but we will not pay for that building until next budget year. You can add, you can add anything up through the fiscal year, but you are not charged for until you renew your policy next year. So we will not pay for that building's insurance until sixteen seventy. Thank you.
That's right, question.
Do I have any? Jim? Mr. Knight?
No questions this time, sir.
No, Mr. Chairman.
I remind everybody that our next meeting, we'll be voting, we'll have a further hearing on our budget. We'll be voting on the local option sales tax and one or two other items as far as the budget before third reading.
Chairman, we did publish a flyer, notes, make a full paper last week, so we're on track with that. Y'all can get it through, it'll be twenty-third, I guess, that's plenty of time to get it set up. So I commend the council for a lot of hard work and hope to get to the end of this hard new task that you every, every spring. I like to speak down there for this. And it's Kirk and the others too, I think. Park did work hard on this and I think it's, we certainly done a long involved process. I think anybody could have a mouth to look at and talk about it, feed it around a little bit, that's kind of where we are. We hope to get thoroughly to it today.
It's a long, drawn out, thought out process. A lot of things you do, you don't like what you have to do, but you have to do. Next thing on our discussion item is our administration, Mr. Seger.
Very good, sir. I think at your, at your desk, you have a flyer about a chamber conference event on Friday morning, June twelfth, seven thirty at the higher ed center, newly elected leaders of Lawrence County. We give this, they call this a red carpet breakfast, a series of things they do and they, it's always well received this time of year. The person to speak will be John Stankis, the new mayor of Lawrence, Gary Kirkendall, Plumb City Council, Jimmy Young, Plumb City Council, Holmes Jones, Lawrence County. So we have a table that we purchased out there with eight seats to it, so if you want, you can, both chamber representatives, plenty, plenty of space if you want to come, so we will look forward to that. Mr. Chairman, I have one other item that I would like to pose as part of the budget process, and this is strictly of staff, not really a recommendation, just a thought. Other agencies have contributed to the budget process this year that have been cut, so a lot of things have gone on. Lawrence County Fire Service has a pretty substantial fund balance between about eighty thousand dollars on budget, forty-four million, which is probably stronger than the county fund balance is. Also, fire service is, they do a great job, the boys, many of the staff, they do a great job, but other people who work for fire service, well, I spend time with it, from a military standpoint, the finance office spends time with it, HR, HR staff spends time with, you know, new employees, I think, Mr. Kirkshane, I think spends time with it through his office and all that. And, and effectively, we had thought perhaps thirty thousand dollars, what we call contribution or fund transfer, or some transfer of funds from that fund balance to the general fund of the county, which certainly appropriate with five hundred and, sort of this, five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars fund balance we're looking at, has to have to deal with. And we had, we just seemed that, you know, we're all the game and we're all the game. And stop us mainly about each, nothing would be a problem. And this seems weird, and years passed, we have done it the last couple of years, years passed, that order that made this transfer, it cost, it cost the ethics of the elder force we own, and his kind of partner, he's got some money for us. Just offer that as a suggestion to try to help a little bit with the general fund issue of the county.
Basically, the fire service, the only money that goes in the fire service is taxed and it comes from the unincorporated areas of the county. These cities do not contribute to the fire service. But the county does a lot of this work for the fire service and basically what we saying is we're gonna ask fire service to contribute a little bit of money from the unincorporated counties to the general fund, which Ernie suggested, thirty thousand dollars. And I'm all right with it, but I, I'll open floor for a motion, if anybody'd like a motion to do that. We can do it on a resolution, is that right? Do we have a motion to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the fire service to the general fund of the county?
I have a question before we bring the fire, let's make a motion, let's make a motion.
Do we have a motion? If we don't have a motion, it's needless. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to transfer thirty thousand dollars as a, shall I say, reimbursement for the labor that the county has provided for fire.
That's basically what it is. It's nothing different than what the county does for the LCDC.
I, I'll restate that as, yes, sir.
They do all payroll work and all for the LCDC.
I, I restate that as, as administrative, okay, administrative service that the county provides for fire.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second, for discussion.
We got a motion in second. All right, we'll open with a discussion. Mr. Thompson.
I'm doing, I'm rushing.
Mr. Knight?
Well, it's still pending, fire contract with Fountain Inn and I don't know about it currently. Fountain Inn's going to pull money, we still got that, but I'm still with the thirty thousand coming out of the fire service. And we know we got a lot of expense in the fire service too. So if we can afford it, we do it in the budget.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. We, we're talking about taking thirty thousand out of the fire service?
That's right.
The fire service has got a contingency fund, it was up around nine hundred thousand. This, this money that's built up over twenty years, it's basically paid in the county for the administrative work that the county does for fire service, and the money is going right into the general fund.
Just to clarify, it won't go to anybody's account. It's, it's just, it's just a form by integration, HR, payroll, those kind of things that, that helped fire for popular.
And this is coming out of, so we're not talking about the general fund.
No, it's not. It kept coming out of the, the unincorporated area, the unincorporated area, it's coming out of that part of the county. In other words, when you pay your taxes on your car, you pay fire tax, and when you pay your property tax, you pay fire taxes, if you live in an unincorporated area of the county, and that's where this is big coming from. Ms. Anderson?
First, I was just gonna ask if we're still gonna be discussing some adjustments in salary, how it's gonna try to, wait until we got there to discuss those and then discuss this too.
I plan on doing that before third reading.
Okay. But now, where is the fund going to, after we get this fund out of the fire budget, is it going to minus out what's coming out of the fund balance? Or where is it gonna be?
Basically, reduce the fund by five twenty-three or four ninety, whatever that would be, a little thirty thousand dollars toward, toward that. And which leads to companies coming out of the general fund and observing.
Now, the fire department's gonna start some new workaround, starting next year, right? Starting next year. Okay, now, is this not gonna affect their budget in some kind of way if some come up that they might need it? And have we ever, we never have gotten anything before that I know of.
In year, in lean years, I'm talking six, eight, ten years ago, county auditors did big transfers based on everything we talked about, the fact that county offices do performance functions for the fire service that they couldn't do otherwise. But it's been several years since that's been done. And it had an audit process to go back, back when fund balances were very problematic.
This, this due work that the fire firm's gonna be doing, that's coming out, all, so this wouldn't affect that?
I realize that, but still, that could be some other things that come out of the fund, have anything to do with during that time, and so you would always go back to your observer. And since he's giving us thirty thousand, I thought he might want to give us, you know, want to give us five.
You're welcome to make that something out of season.
I'm gonna get all pants down to thighs and not even give us five.
Well, this is the same fund that we bought, if you remember, we bought our ladder truck in one of the record, we spent four hundred thousand dollars. A ladder truck, this is the same fund that came out of it.
That happened to the fire department.
Yeah, fire service.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, you know, if they had a couple of extra, they could add some more to it. That's just my opinion, is all I have to say.
I think it's fair, fair amount.
Not when you got four hundred and some, eight, eight hundred and some one thousand and not, that's not even a percent.
But how many, how many trucks and how many departments they got out of the county?
I realize that, that's why I was asking about the funds.
They want a fund balance, just like we want to keep the fund balance here on county campus.
That's what I'm thinking, but they have something to give, you know, give their money.
Mr. Phil?
Mr. Chairman, I have the fire service budget in front of me for the fourteen, fifteen year. I am under the assumption that the millage will continue at eighteen mills, of which sixteen point one will go towards the operational function of the fire service and one point nine, one point nine mills will go to the reserve, is that right, Mr. Seger?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, and we don't know how much a fire mill will bring in. Last year was a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
That's the next process this council will go through, through the fire plate. He's got it prepared, I think, but I have not seen it. Probably close to what that, what that value is.
That's what I would say. Well, I'm showing the balance last year now, five hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars.
But you've got two funds.
For our general fund and for our order.
At eight hundred, we, we both. I got you. No further questions, question?
All right, we need a resolution number, we decide, we gonna vote on it, then we assign resolution number two.
We do resolution two.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All vote.
And we can, we can include that in the, the number we're looking at two weeks from now, and then we have a, if, if like I said, he'll just reduce that five twenty-three by that amount, that, that helps a lot.
I think it's fair, I, we've asked most every department in this county to contribute this budget here, and we're gonna work this thing out where we get our expenditure back down here with our income. I hope we do. All right, at six P M., I'm on open, fifteen minutes period for open comment. If you got anything you need to address, Council, go out, come for all of the states now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott, with Bridge and the Gap, and I'm here again for you, pretty much pleading. Want to clarify a couple of things. Bridge and the Gap is a nonprofit organization. We have a five oh one C three designation and we also have a board in place. I did submit a budget and I do understand, Mr. Chairman, that you know, our type, our own type of, we acknowledge that. But what we're doing in the communities, and not just one segment, but we, all segments, we're trying to bring families and students together and trying to bridge gap between their gifts and their purpose, so that they can be viable citizens in this city as well as the county. And we're not targeting any particular locations, but the reason I'm here before you, and I did that, want you to consider our budget that we submitted, and certainly wanted to clarify that it's a nonprofit organization. And we do believe in just reaching out to all segments. I wanted to, I wasn't here last time, y'all, may have mentioned Bridge and the Gap, and I wanted to clarify that, that we, we are here to serve the people, all the people, and we made some progress. Right now, we're serving about twenty families. Right now, we're serving about twenty families, we hope, we are hoping to grow. And we did receive a donation from the city of five thousand, we did do that. And we are on tap to, um, submit toward grant, but we know that's, that is a process. And we also set up some camp program that will keep kids from falling off over the summer. A lot of educators there between June and August, they lose a lot, so we are trying to tap into it. We, we need transportation to reach out to the outlined campuses of, of all the counties, all the parts of the counties, and we just want to try to be able to be a mainstay. So I wanted to help these individuals realize that they too stand a chance if we all get involved. And that is, that's, that's my plea to Counsel, you know, really hope that you really reconsider our budget.
Good point, Mr. Whitmore, uh, we, we approached that, and we decided not to do it this year, we, we just pushed the money out. It was quoted in the paper last week that we cut the Federation blind ten thousand, five thousand, but we basically funded them in the same thing we did last year. We didn't cut them this year, we just funded them in the same amount we did last year, and there was another one, which one was it?
Senior Auction. Good sir, what was it?
Senior Auction, it wasn't in there, but we had the Senior Auctions in there, but there was another one that stated that we cut five thousand dollars, which we didn't do. We funded it the same amount it was last year. And we just pushed the money so hard, this year, we've asked all our departments to cut it back, and we just haven't got the money this year.
Yes, sir. On a light note, we want to invite y'all to our first annual youth rally, which is coming Saturday, eleven thirty, reaching out to the city of Cleveland as well as this city. And want you to come out, don't have to spend no money, just get some hot dogs, hamburgers, if you get a chance, step outside the conference zone, you know, you can watch the high, the community behind Cleveland, so, from eleven thirty, want to invite all of you.
I, I understand you, the project, and the importance of it, but we just did a, we, two million dollars in my hole right now.
Yes, sir.
We're driving Peter to pay ball right now.
Well, we're gonna keep trying, and we, we're gonna, we are going to find the sources, uh, we won't give up, because we realize that our youth of that budget there is very important to us. And we won't give up, we just keep trying, there are gonna be some sources that come about, but I do appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight. And hopefully in the future, we can come back and form a, a more positive one.
Excuse me, may I say something? Uh, 'cause I did hear about a summer program that you love to do in, in life, and some of that.
Yes, ma'am, we, we, uh, we're doing a summer program from eight to one, uh, Monday through Thursday, uh, kids eighth grade through eighth grade. That's a significant drop off generally, uh, after talking to the educators, they're saying that, listen, during the summer, they don't do anything, and it's not too many programs in any around this county that are addressing the educational part of it. Mostly it's gonna be enrichment and fun time. So we're gonna mix, uh, some education, as with writing, math, and reading, with our retired teachers again, they are, I mean, they are really dedicated. And, um, then we have some enrichment time. And we feel that probably by, by next week, we'll be full, and we're trying to go to the capacity of twenty-five, um, just keep that number down so we can be effective.
But the comment time is still open, does anybody else want to address Counsel? Is no one else, Dress Counsel, or blow, blow the comments down, and I'll, I'll ask comments from Counsel tomorrow. Mr. Thompson? Do you have any other questions? Mr. Knight?
No, I think it was, Chairman.
Mr. Down?
Not a stop, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pitt? Dustin? Miss Anderson? Well, I'm gonna mark a comment in. I was listening to W O E G this morning, one of our legislators was on there, and Mr. Mike Pitts had called in. He sits on the House Ways and Means Committee. Does everybody in this chamber know the state shorted this county almost a million dollars this year in the past three years? A million dollars a year? And, uh, all of, all of a sudden, four hundred million dollars appeared in state hours down there, extra money they had down there. They didn't, didn't know where it came from. Where it came from, the money they didn't give us back. I think all three of our legislators, Mr. Pitts, Mrs. Anthony, and Mr. Willis, all three sits on the House Ways and Means Committee. It was a pretty lengthy discussion on W O E G this morning, but I never heard the local government fund discussed the first time. It was always about something else, a road fund, and something else, wondering where we're gonna spend this money? And where we're gonna spend all this extra money we got. But it looks to me like if they got all that extra money down there, they'd at least fund our county, like you said. But that's all I got. No one else has got anything. I guess we stand here.